I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Paul Popper?
Here.
Haley?
Here.
Jessie? Ryan?
Here.
Agenda adjustments? Okay, we would like to open it up to public comment. Just a reminder, this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on agenda items, contribute info that may be of interest to the school committee, or ask clarifying questions. Please wait to be recognized and identify yourself before speaking. This is not the time to register complaints and promote a personal agenda. Please remember that you may not identify any person by name or job function. We'd like to welcome Greg Newell.
Greg Newell, Herman, school committee members, I'd like to play you an audio recording. It's from the school committee meeting on January 8th, 2024.
The first full reading of the budget will be in March, the first reading of the budget will be in March. So somewhere between now and 21 March, we were to have a finance subcommittee to put together a budget workshop so that we can have all that because as we know, we don't have all that information. Say, there's still not a budget workshop, like these two, like these two.
No, that's not true. Everybody says we have not scheduled a workshop yet because we have not all our information together. We should have all that information put the January 30th meeting and then the finance subcommittee can work together, put together a workshop. It's now January 27th, and the public never got a single workshop on the budget. I guess Ms. Kuzier was right. Well, we're not going to have a workshop on it. I guess you all think that the public has no need to ask questions about a $19.7 million budget. I now know why you do not want to show actual cost on the budget sheets because people would have seen the following. According to the school department's handouts, at the end of the '22-'23 school budget year, this school department spent $16,682,859.56, not $17,516.987, as you stated. The difference between the two budgets is $3,45,403.40. That's an 18.3% increase. If you compare the student enrollment numbers from '22 to '23 timeframe to what's projected for the budget for the 2025 timeframe, it's actually a student population decrease of 1.3%. I'm all for supporting teachers, students, and providing what they need. But someone has to explain this to me. It doesn't make sense. I'm also wondering when the first reading of the budget will happen. The last meeting in the agenda, it said a budget presentation. Didn't say anything about a first reading, and I'm wondering when that's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Regina Leonard.
Hi, Regina Leonard, Herman. Kind of popping off of what Greg said, I sent an email to the entire board December 6th where I requested a workshop for the budget season to be put on the agenda, and that never happened. And I really don't understand the hesitancy that you have on this committee of not having workshops and involving the public. The majority of my taxes go to the school, and having some input and some feedback from your people would start to heal a lot of things if there was some more communication. Another thing that I noticed today, trying to find budget items and such on the website, it's incredibly difficult to find them, and I never did find the line item budget on the website. I mean, there's stuff on our website from before COVID, Instagram, you started an Instagram page, Facebook, like lots of things to be used and put out so that we can have this information. I think it's great that you had a special on the budget. I think that's wonderful, and that the town and you're working together. That's great. But you need to involve the people and let the people be heard. And I'm going to bring it up again because I want to see and have an answer on the budget, what your budget is for your lawyer fees. Because at this rate right now, you're going to be over $100,000 this year. And I'm sorry, that's ridiculous. That money could be used and put elsewhere, and we all know it. And I want to see more things for kids and for our teachers instead of this insane spending that doesn't need to happen. Again, I never got a reply from that email, so, you know, communication is lacking. I think that was all I had for questions. Let me just... Oh, no, there are a couple more questions. The lawyer fees was one. Are you looking down the line on the next year, the event of this lawsuit that's going to happen? What happens if you're forced to settle for more than the insurance covers? Where's that money coming from? The IT issue, and how much is that going to cost? I haven't heard anything talked about that. We've heard upwards to $1 million for computers and all the other networking stuff, and I haven't seen that put anywhere. The SEC investigation, I know we don't know yet, but are we projecting and looking at that, and how much money that could be, and where is that going to come from? Because in the end, you know where it comes from. The top is there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're also going to give the public an opportunity to speak after Micah's presentation and how many workshops we've had, but we will give those all up to the public as well.
You know that I wrote down that I want to speak.
So I'm going to turn it over to Micah for presentation.
I want to speak. I have a legal right to speak during public comment. You're part of the committee, and we can't speak.
You can't speak?
No. You do this to me every single time. You say, "I can speak here with the committee." Then you don't let me speak here. You don't let me speak.
Micah is going to present on the budget, and that's during...
I am going to... My first amendment, right, to walk down and speak. You are part of the committee. You said that last time, and then when I tried to speak, you wouldn't let me talk.
I would invite you to present on the budget.
I am not going to be that promptly.
So, as you can see from the packet, and the handouts are on the back table as well.
I said, "Bring it forward."
So, as you can see from the packet, that's on the back table as well, you have the proposed budget. Not a lot has changed in regards to the first several slides that are on there, but I'll just walk you through those. This budget, and one of the primary goals of the budget was to, as I said at the last meeting, was to keep several of the federal positions that we had in place. The notable positions are the middle school teacher, the nurse at the middle school, and obviously accommodate for all the collective bargaining units. Those were the primary concerns with this budget. This budget does that. It also captures the needed instructional supply requests from the staff, and it does continue to reduce the investment. So even after the first reading of the budget, we were still able to accomplish that and bring, obviously, I had a projected number, probably you've all seen it at this point, but thankful and pleased to say that that number has come way down from our first reading. And I just want to especially thank Jamie for her diligence and her work in that. The moving principals have been absolutely supportive. I appreciate your effort. You've worked with us and really trying to recalibrate the budget so that our target is going to be, when we move into the next several years, what we're going to try to accomplish is spending or moving into a situation where we are not leaving 5%, 6% unspent, but we want to move into a range of 2.5% and 3% unspent. That's a much more reasonable number when you start looking at our budget. The third slide outside of the, yeah, the third slide in the packet, it just highlights the timetable, and here I would just say, thank you to the finance committee, all the individuals from the public that showed up and shared, as well as the town councilors that participated, as well as Mr. Barry. Really appreciate their input in this. We are way ahead of schedule, which is great. We had great participation, again, from those individuals from town and also from the school, directors, the principals, et cetera. And so I just, again, really appreciate the effort and the time that they've put into that to give me feedback, give the committee feedback. It's been a really helpful process doing that the last two years. I think it helps streamline and build support. The enrollment, where we are right now, we are projecting a slight increase. For next year, we're projecting about 1,375 students. So that's obviously a good thing, both in budget and for the health of our school. We do anticipate seeing most of that increase take place here at Herman High School. We plan on about 20 more students. So, yeah, bring it forward.
I care. When are we allowed to ask questions? I keep going. Do we have questions?
Let's allow him to... Let's ask him to present. Allow him to present. I'm going to open it up to the public. I'll remind you, as a committee member, you're able to speak more than three minutes, and you'll have plenty of time at that time. So let's allow Micah to present. I'm going to open it up to public comment, and then the committee will have an opportunity. Thank you.
So we are anticipating about 1,375 students, and as you know, that number is important because specifically when that happens at the high school, we have an increase. A lot of times that impacts our tuition or our tuition rate, or both. In addition, it's also the number that ED279 subsidy is going to be stopped. And so the higher you are, they take a two-year average. And so, again, we would like to see our enrollment continue to increase, and we do anticipate a slight bump from this year. The ED279 at this time still has not changed, but we are anticipating that we will not rule that out. We do think that that could potentially happen. We're waiting for some bus information in how we restructured the bus payment last year. So we think that there could be an adjustment, and if it's an adjustment that increases our budget, we'll bring it back. If it decreases our budget, we'll just continue on. So ED279, that just gives you an idea of our ratios. Slide six, the notable changes in this year's budgets. Although the enrollment was down from last year, across the board, we were still able to pick up a significant amount more than state subsidy, both at the pre-K 8 level and the 9th level. So the town contribution rose $143,000. The state contribution rose $327,000 for a total of $470,000 increase. That has not changed yet. We are anticipating many changes again there. So that's obviously a notable increase, and that's something that has happened over the last two years. We have seen increases in both the town contribution and the state contribution as a result of the ED279. So where we currently stand, this highlights the budget history, slide seven, and it also highlights where this budget is. That number is $19,728,262. That represents a $677,000 increase over last year, which is just a hair over 3.5. I think it's 3.55%. So the budget is up 3.5%, and it's, again, a total of $19,728,262. That is down from my initial proposal to you on, I believe it was March 4th or 5th, whatever that school committee meeting was, we were just a little bit over $20,000,000. It was $20,78,000 and change, but we were trying to get to $19,819,000, somewhere in that range. And we have, again, just been able to whittle away at that, really continue to calibrate actuals versus what is budgeted, and try to develop trends, move things to the right lines. Again, Jamie, thank you for all the work in that. The major expenditure improvements, one of the ideas that came out of the finance committee was to look at where we are spending, like, one-time costs, where we seem to just spend money one time. And the one thing that we noticed was that we don't necessarily, that doesn't always come out of facilities. I know a lot of times it feels like facilities are, right, we label them as SIPs projects. Often times, we pay for those at the reserve accounts. But one of the things that we noticed was, we have other areas, especially this year, where we have several significant one-time costs. And so that bar graph highlights where we have some of those major expenditure improvements this year. Those include bus purchase, $80,000. We have about $25,000 in one-time purchases for our athletic department. We have well over $200,000 in facilities, so some of the significant things there. We have a new cafeteria floor that we are planning on putting in. That's at the, not only in the cafeteria itself, but in the lobby way. And there's an asbestos basement that has to happen in conjunction with that, and take up the old floor, a water storage tank, replacing many of the doors at the middle school. So there's a large door project that we're going to be doing down at the middle school, putting better and stronger doors in, both internally and externally. And then another significant cost this year is the engineering design here at Herman High School. There's two science rooms that we'd like to turn into state-of-the-art science labs. Unfortunately, due to the way those are currently constructed, constructed, excuse me, the hallways into those spaces, we are going to need an engineering design. And so we are receiving bids for that. And so that's a pretty significant cost prior to being able to do the actual construction. And then technology, we have several projects planned this year. We have some cabling projects at all three buildings, and a virus software that we plan on putting on some of the devices that don't currently have it. We have several cameras that we'd like to put in, some new paging equipment at our two, excuse me, at our elementary and the middle school, battery backups, and then ultimately doing a security audit in the fall to compare that to the audit that we had done back in this last fall in September. So the major component that we get asked a lot about, and when we talk it over finance committee, the primary concern is that we understand we do not spend $20.00. We have funds that are left over at the end of every single year. And so this budget, and when you look at our undesignated fund, this budget assumes that all of those funds, which is $1 million this year, in the current budget, the year we're in FY '24, we plan on using $1 million as revenue from our undesignated fund. And I think that it is important that we spend the entire amount of that. Now, that doesn't have to be on all items, right? It doesn't have to be on supplies and things like that, but we do believe that we will probably come in unexpended to a $4 million. And so the finance committee recommended looking at priority use of those undesignated funds, that $1 million. So if we don't use the $4 million, what and should we spend that money on? So what I recommended, after getting that instruction, was I recommend that anything shy of $1 million should go to two significant projects. This is on slide nine. Project A, there's a significant fencing project. You've probably seen some of the fencing that's been knocked down, moved back here at the high school, as well as around some of the newer facilities that are going up. We anticipate that to be just under $40,000. And so I recommend that that be the first project that we spend anything short of $1 million on, if we have, you know, whatever we're not spent out of that undesignated fund. I then think that we should complete a awning project at the elementary school. I talked about this in the finance committee. I believe I mentioned it at the budget meeting. We have several cement curbs and awnings. Some of the rigs at the elementary school, they are in very bad shape. They're, the pavement, or the, I should say, the concrete is cracking. The awnings can't support snow, rain, etc. It's a safety hazard. Kid going in and out for recess and things like that. So that would be the second project that I would recommend allocating that money to. So that's about $90,000. I then think we should designate whatever is left, and this is how I would recommend designating money. I think we should designate priority one, we should designate $250,000 to complete the renovation of the science labs. We believe that this will be a very expensive project. There is several hundred thousand dollars in the designated fund already in the school repair reserve accounts. However, having a quarter of a million dollars there to pull next year would dramatically reduce the amount that would have to be raised locally next year on top of the expenditure budget, the normal operation budget. I think it would be very wise to have that money put away, and that way that project can get started as soon as school is over. And so I think we should designate $250,000 into a specific science laboratory, or science improvement, or high school science labs project. I then believe we should, if there's any money left over, so right now we're talking $350,000, if there's any money left over, I think that we should fully fund the bus reserve account. So the cost of buying one bus is about $155,000. We have about $80,000 in the bus reserve right now, so I'm recommending $73,000 to bus reserves to round out that account. And then putting, again, this is just if there's money left over, what you're doing is you're designating it. You're putting it with an earmark on it so that it doesn't just go back. The designated fund has its targeted purpose. I'm recommending that we use $50,000, again, get it there. We put it into the enrollment stabilization. We have always intended to rename that to, like, out-of-district placement, but that would bring that fund up to about $150,000. That would fund you roughly three or four students out of each year, or an entire year. You're looking at 40,000 to 50,000, depending on their age bracket, if they're pre-K to 4, 5 to 8, or 9 to 12. So the numbers might fluctuate depending on who the student is and what program they're in, but that would give you enough money to safely fund, again, three students in out-of-district placement, maybe more if they were younger students. So that's how I recommend we potentially either spend or designate about $450,000 to $500,000 if it happens to be left over at the end of this budget year, in that descending order. What I did on the next slide, I just showed the reserve accounts. And so I did highlight specifically here, I didn't add any to the bus purchase, and I did not add anything to the enrollment stabilization, but you can see where those numbers are. The bus purchase is at 87,000. The enrollment stabilization is at 100. That's why I recommended the numbers that I did, if available. But you can see that I did add in the HHS science lab project at the $250,000. So, moving into the undesignated fund, you can see from your revenue sheet, this is also one of the handouts in the map. If you go to page four, which is the last page, it's almost the last slide down, not quite. It's called the balance for revenue. That is the money that we are using out of our undesignated fund to fund this year's budget. So we plan on using $1,399,848 out of the undesignated fund to fund this year's budget. One of the recommendations, again, this is another great recommendation that came out of finance committee, was to highlight the things in the budget that were major expenditure improvements, such as some of the facilities, the IT, that we know and anticipate will be singular cost versus the actual expenditure budget. So how much is being used to fund one-time projects, and how much is being used to fund normal operations? Now, we can't show it like this on this revenues report. It doesn't work that way. However, I am able to show it in my own spreadsheet. And so what I did in this particular spreadsheet is slide 11. I'm able to show what the school department fund balance was on June 30th. And we don't get this report till October, but this backdates to June 30th of 2023, and you can see what our fund balance was, $3,170,000. Then you have to less out the fund balance that we are planning on using this year, and that's that $1 million I was just referencing. So we plan on using obviously a significant portion of that for this year's budget, and if we do not use all of it, you already saw how I can propose either designating it or spending it and then designating it. Then listed several of the capital improvement projects for the FY '25 budget year, including the pads projects, which is the flooring, the water tank, the door projects, the engineering design here, IT updates, athletics, for a total of rightly $410,000. I've kind of gone back and forth sometimes. I think it's like $415,000, and some of the items, we're just not 100% sure, like, if we're going to have to, like, we had an overhead debt on there. We're not sure if that counts as a one-time cost. This number has fluctuated. You saw this from my emails earlier this week. It's fluctuated between $396,000 and $410,000 to $416,000. But we feel right now that roughly $410,000, yeah, about $410,000 is for projects and one-time costs. And what that does is that kind of breaks down that undesignated fund of 1.3 million that's listed as the revenue. It kind of shows you that the operational budget is just a little bit over $9 million, actually, just a little under $1 million, excuse me, and $989,000. And that gives you the total of $1,399,848. Now, if that was all used next year for the budget, the capital improvements, et cetera, that would fully draw, that would have a drawdown in your undesignated balance to start the FY '26 year to $770,000. So when you look at where we are right now, as of the audit, at $3,170,000, down to $770,000, obviously, we have a plan to continue to reduce that very large amount to what we would consider to be an operational and safe level, and we're using it to offset taxes. And one of the reasons why that number is $989,000 is highlighted on the next slide, the last slide, the history of local contribution. One of the things that the finance committee also recommended was, they recommended that in '23, '24, we ask the taxpayers, the town, and then the taxpayers, we ask for $1,216,296. That's the additional local that we asked for above and beyond what the state said the town had to contribute. This year, we were planning on asking for that same amount, $1,216,296, which would have yielded an increase. So if you follow '24, '25, on that last slide, if you follow that down, if you were to take the $1,133,243, if you were to make that $1,216,296, you'd see a bump of roughly $83,000. However, it was recommended, and I'm bringing that forward tonight as my recommendation, is that we go in with a $0 increase to the town this year. We, again, we had many good We, again, we had many conversations about this at finance committee. And we just feel like, given, again, the year that it's been, inflation, what it's been, this year, we would be able to use all of our designated fund or a large majority of our designated fund to ask for a zero dollar increase. And we feel like that's a responsible thing to do, given where we currently sit fiscally. I think there would be times where it wouldn't be responsible, but I think this year that it is responsible to do. So this budget would decrease the local cost, or, excuse me, would decrease. I guess it would decrease it, but it would come in at a zero dollar increase to the town this year. So we feel like this budget is pretty significant. I just did the highlights again, that the budget is up three and a half percent. When you factor out one-time costs, the budget's only up one point three, one point three-three percent. This budget reduces the undesignated fund dramatically by over a million dollars, one point three million dollars. This budget continues to, again, reduce the undesignated fund. It sets the school up to have some very significant improvements next year, specifically Herman High School, which we think is fantastic. And it also comes in at a zero dollar increase to the town. So we feel really good about this budget. We think that it accomplishes a lot. We think it's responsible. It gets the students what we need. And right now, we are just sitting on two very small variables that, you know, we're just kind of waiting for those to get wrapped up. And like I said, I feel as though I can recommend this very confidently as a second reading in the final proposal unless something drastically changes where the nineteen million, seven hundred twenty-eight thousand, two hundred sixty-two dollars goes up. So at that time, that would, I would conclude my budget presentation.
Thank you. I'd now like to open it up to public comment for a second time.
Gregor O'Hanlon, Herman. It was stated that the public involvement in the finance committee subcommittee meetings. Yes, there was a little bit of public there. They asked questions. Never got any answers from any of the committee members during those sessions. So I want to call that public involvement. I would state that more as like possibly ignoring the public. Also, the student number increase, you said increase from last year? Well, that's only if you go, that's more off of the new numbers. If you went off your projected numbers, it's actually still a decrease. I'm not sure who told you all that antivirus software is only a one-time cost of twenty-five thousand. I don't know of a single company that will let you buy their software and pay only a one-time cost for the rest of the life of the software. That's unheard of. And you got that, that's great, but please let everyone else know because that's an unheard of thing. You also talked about money left over in this current budget, which means you didn't budget well this year, for this year. But also means that the amount of money, you take that three hundred fifty thousand or five hundred thousand, whichever numbers come out, it comes out to be, which means you're actually off, you're actually asking for a larger increase than three, three point five percent, probably closer to six percent. Just be honest with us. Be upfront with the numbers. Stop lying these games of budget this, not actual numbers. I don't know of anyone or any company that goes off of budgeted numbers to create their next budget. They go off of actual numbers. So I wish you'd start using actual numbers. We have them, and you refuse to use them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a couple comments? Or did you want to comment?
I would just say that antivirus software will continue to decrease because we are going to be about new devices that require that. So that number will lessen dramatically every single year. So we anticipate significant reductions. Unfortunately, we can't use actuals this year because we're in this year. So we do have to use, we do have to use the budget number. And I obviously, if somebody's opinion is that even if the campus is public, then it's a public meeting. The public was there, the counselors were there, other members of the public. So I agree, again, I just appreciate their participation. They were instrumental in, I think, getting, enailing a really strong, tight budget.
Ed Ford, Herman. Just curious, where can we find this document that were, that has appeared tonight?
It's on the website, it's out back.
This is not the same, it is out back, I appreciate that. This is not the same document that is on the website.
Yes, it is.
I just, I just looked at it. And where, where, can you just pull that up? Are we different?
Can we public or can we post the updated one?
Yeah, of course.
Welcome. Well, we just walked in tonight for a budget with a brand-new document. So, and that just highlights why this budget is very confusing for taxpayers. We're jumping back between PowerPoint and cost center budgets. Who does that? I, I would look, I'd look, and maybe the school board should have too. Look across the state, who do? Who presents budgets this way? Nobody. And if you could find one, my apologies. And I appreciate the work you folks are doing. But nobody bounced between PowerPoint, cost center, and back to PowerPoint. It's just, I don't get it. And it's very confusing for people that aren't budget people, that just try to figure stuff out. Also, another concern here, I mean, are we gonna hear a school board vision at any point in our near future for this budget? Like nobody, I haven't, all year, we've all come to these meetings. We haven't heard anything about student outcomes or improving student outcomes. These are, this budget is all about numbers and trying to fit into some, into some box. And it would be nice at some point if we hear that, if we can hear that. I don't suppose you have twenty-two, twenty-three actual budget number by any chance? I do see this slide here that lists seventeen and some change. Is that the actual or is that the budget? You don't have to answer that now. Also, are we gonna be able to find a current undesignated fund balance as of April first of this year? Because this doc, this document here you've given out, this number is almost a year old, three million and some change. Just curious, any idea what June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four is gonna look like from undesignated? Because if that's the case, we're not talking about the difference between this twenty-three number and June twenty-four. It'd be nice to know what that is.
Mr. Ford, it doesn't work that way. The audit is the only thing that tells you.
I know, but you, what you've made great projections here going forward. There's no way you could just give an idea, projection about the history of it?
It's a million and less.
No. How do you, I think it's five million. I think undesignated in June twenty-four is gonna be five million dollars.
Okay.
But I mean, why don't you, I, I would take a number or whatever you have. I, somebody needs to tell me that's not the number.
I just told you, it's three point one as of June twenty-three. And it's gonna be two point one if the school committee.
So you don't anticipate one anymore, undesignated come June thirtieth?
Not if the school committee takes my recommendations.
Or June first?
Okay. Would you ever finish, Mr. Ford?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. So it's gonna be a million less if the school committee follows my recommendation to spend on the projects that I listed and prioritize and designate remaining funds.
I guess we will see.
We will.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen evidence up in the last three years, but maybe you'll look this one right. I hope the taxpayers sort us out. Thank you for your time.
I just want to comment that the administration updates almost every single report about the students. And if we, I asked even the last committee meeting or the one before for them to update us on testing results. So we are very focused on the students and how they're improving, so.
Mr. Grant, can you repeat what you said a few minutes ago about the firewall one cost? And it goes away because we're doing what?
The antivirus.
Of the antivirus?
Yes, ma'am. Unfortunately, the firewall is not his annual cost, but the antivirus.
The antivirus, sorry.
That, that will decrease because we are moving to a different student platform. So the devices that need an antivirus will be moved out of the population. And the device that doesn't need an antivirus will be brought in.
What would the device be that doesn't need one?
Will come look.
Interesting. The presentation that we have with the slides on it, the same as last year. I know I'm getting older, I need a new prescription, but we can't read that. And so again, transparency, communication. And it's on the website, as you say, it is almost impossible. I've been doing this for three years. I've learned how to dig and find stuff on there, but for the average citizen of this town to just go and find this presentation or this budget, it's almost impossible. It's there, but it's not easy for the average person to find it. And I cannot read this document that you referenced outside. I can't read it. And the same thing happened last year. And, you know, you've told us a bunch that printout is expensive. So these are just little details of just being forthright, communicating so we can actually sit and could have asked you questions, but I can't even read it.
With all due respect, a small print is not a lack of communication or transparency.
What I'm saying is you presented a document that you can't read, Mr. Grant. Therefore, that's not communicated properly.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
Back when, Tony Reynolds, Herman. Back when I was on school board, I understood that the budget was very important to the town and to the people and how to run the school. But also, back then, and I believe it's still the same, superintendent has the responsibility and your school board members of, of making sure the kids at Herman, Carmel, and Levan and other districts and other towns now get a good education. And if something crazy happens and you guys need to spend more money, you are able to do that and then the town will pay for it. I don't believe that's changed. It may have, but it hasn't, I apologize. But I think everybody needs to count out on a budget. It is a good starting point, but it's not the end.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
Danielle Henry, Herman. Thank you for letting me be involved in the budget process. I just have a clarifying question. You, I know during the budgeting process, it was mentioned that there are a few items still outstanding. And you had mentioned that earlier tonight and I think again later. Is it possible after tonight for those adjustments? And I believe those adjustments may go down. Is it possible after tonight's vote, if those items that you're still waiting for come back? Will the budget be able to go down or does it need to come back before the committee again? I'm not asking you to make it go down more, I'm just trying to get clarification on what you're saying.
So the two outstanding items for the committees, I think I've said this before. One is the teachers contract. So we are actually, we have kind of agreed concluded negotiations. So that, that's great. But that is one item that we had to use a placeholder in the budget. We are, we just closed on Monday night, so we have not run the number. We do believe that we put a larger placeholder than where we close. The second one is health insurance. I received the ranges from the MBA trust. Is the MBA trust came, did I say that right? The MBA trust to, yesterday. Was it yesterday? There is a chance, based on that range that I saw, that we do not budget enough. Am I accurate in that, Jamie? I thought, we use a placeholder of ten percent. They did say the range could be as high as eleven point five percent. Our hope is that we will not be in the eleven and a half group that will be ten or under. And that will also be number that we settle that with our teachers collective bargaining unit will, we anticipate the budget to go down if we are ten percent or less for health insurance.
Danielle, are you also asking though if the number changes? Does it have to, procedurally, does it come back?
It's a procedural question. If the number changes, does it have to come back before this committee? Or is it something that the committee's gonna authorize that if it goes down, they can move forward?
My recommendation would be, and I believe that we can move forward if it's less.
Right, thank you.
It's okay for me to come up here, but I do just want to direct people. I'm looking for the budget on here and I think this might be helpful. So when I go on the first page, I see the proposed budget. And if you click on it, it's in a PowerPoint and it looks pretty large. You can also zoom in on it, so it does have that ability. So I just want to say like, maybe just to look into, like, I could show you if you want to learn it.
I thought that was helpful. Thank you, I appreciate it. Any additional public comment? We will close public comments. I'm gonna turn it over to the committee before we do a vote because I want to make sure that everybody, you know, morally, we take a motion, we take a second, and then we open it up for discussion. But I want to have all questions asked right now, so I'd like to turn it over.
I'll be very transparent that I didn't get the budget till just a few days ago. I've asked for months and months to have the budget, to be able to review, to be part of it. I haven't had my emails returned. I haven't been allowed to speak during public comment. I don't get questions answered. And if I send questions, I am replying that my questions are found as harassment when simply asking for a copy of the budget or asking budget questions. There was no part of the process that some people have said that, oh, we've all been allowed to review. No, we haven't been allowed. Information has been withheld from me specifically, whether it's Herman or just me. So with that, I had a matter of hours to prepare.
Mrs. Keizer, you obviously referenced.
I'm speaking. I didn't know where it was. I'm speaking, thank you. I've had just a matter of hours to prepare, which is clearly by design. So I apologize for the questions, which may have been a bit easier prior.
I just want to add that this is, I just want to add a couple of things. This has been some inaccurate things. The budget, did you not, did you have a copy of it last month?
I didn't, I don't have a copy. I did not ask for a copy.
I thought I saw a copy that you had during the last meeting.
Yes, that was my copy of the current budget, which I asked for. I got a copy from one of the people in the audience who had a copy that was handed out. When I asked at the meeting, I was told there aren't any more copies. Thankfully, someone shared it with me. However, I emailed you, both of you, multiple times, and the secretary asked for a copy of the current budget.
Which you provided to.
As did other people in this audience.
When did you get the budget from me?
I got the budget commute Friday.
Oh, okay, you said a couple hours, you've had a couple hours.
Mr. Grant?
You got a Friday.
I was away out of state all weekend.
I just, you said three hours.
No, I'm saying I had three hours to review nineteen million dollars.
No, you had a Friday.
I don't have time to read it.
You had a Friday. And then you came.
I was traveling to Massachusetts. But you had it.
Yeah, but you, you keep saying you got a three hours.
I, you know, what I said was I had three hours, there about this two couple of nineteen million dollars. That's what I said.
But that's, that's for you, that's your problem.
That's my problem. I have less than a week to review nineteen million dollars while the rest of you have had months.
That is inaccurate, that's inaccurate. Um, let's move forward with the actual questions on the budget.
You were the one that run it up. I was.
I just wanted to state that there was a copy that you had at the last meeting.
I did not have an accurate copy for a week. You're the one that run it up. You said on the ED two seventy-nine, correct me if I am misunderstanding what you wrote, that there's eight thousand, five hundred and ten dollars for the student subsidy or tuition rate, is that right? That number stands for, it's not written in some money, so I don't know if that's what you're trying to say.
Which one, which grade?
On the ED two seventy-nine notable changes, you wrote eight thousand, five hundred and ten. Is that the tuition rate?
No, that's the state subsidy.
Where in this can I see that the tuition rate went up to ten thousand, four hundred and sixteen? Where is that additional revenue for the tuition rate in this budget?
The tuition revenue is on the revenues page is number. Page two, second one after the top, secondary tuition, regular instruction. And we did not increase it this year. We didn't feel comfortable with the tuition rate. I know it would be easier to just take the ten thousand, four hundred and sixteen. Is that the number? Ten thousand, four hundred and sixteen, somewhere in that range. Unfortunately, we don't get all that money at the Student Ten United Technologies Center. And so we are still waiting for those overall registrations to come in and pay attention. And so we are still waiting for those overall registrations to come in and pay a new TC, and they are tuition students from Carmel, Levant, Blumberg, or the like, right from another town, then we only get a percentage of that tuition.
I didn't notice or could find where we had an expenditure. Usually we have a total expenditures sheet that comes part of this packet, I didn't see that.
Uh, we don't have a report that prints total expenditures. We have J degree spreadsheets for the committee from time to time, but the expenditures, it's a balanced budget, so the revenues is the same as all the cost centers add up. So if you add up all the cost centers that are on the website or in your packet, that's going to come up to, sorry, I just don't want to say the wrong number, $19,728,262.97.
I noticed in the line items that the Lenovo's were still in there for around $64,000, but I thought we were switching to Chromebooks, which was going to be a significant savings.
Yes, the Lenovo was put in the books, or put in the budget, I believe it's for $63,000. That was put in the budget prior to the tech committee meeting where we discussed the transition from one platform to another. So the money will remain in the budget and the type of computer will change as the tech committee and the tech department makes their changes. So it's still in there, it's just likely not be able to.
Correct, but it would be substantial, it's like half the cost.
I have to check to see if that was adjusted.
It was not.
Okay.
And it might not, it might not be adjusted because we don't have a firm price finalized yet. So we had to go with a price that we had a firm on versus trying to project a cost that we haven't made out yet.
Do you have one question?
I do, thank you. I noticed two spots in guidance, there was $140,000 a lot, but it doesn't really explain what it's for, it's just a blanket amount. So I think it was high school and middle school, and don't quote me on that because I don't have any standing, but can you share more about what that large?
Hundreds.
It, but the wages were broken out, and then there was $140,000.
So if you have two people, it's two wages combined. So if there's three guidance counselors at high school, it's three wages all combined. If you have one wage at the middle school, it's one wage. You have two at the elementary school, it's one wage. There's nothing in their budget that's $140,000, it would be wages.
Well, last year we were talking about medical expenses and such, and I didn't see those numbers in here this year. We were talking about mental health services and all of that. I didn't see those numbers or where those can be found in this budget. Granted, I didn't have a ton of time, but.
The mental health services is a contract that goes through its clinical counseling, and so that's also listed, I believe that would be.
Yes, that I did see.
Yep, that would be the mental health services.
I did see fringe benefits listed. I have never seen that listed in contracts. Why are we funding fringe benefits?
I would have to ask Jamie that question. And do you know what cost center that's in?
It's under staff administration, I think, or, I'll have to find it, hundreds of pages. I think you have, you have longer to look at it. Why are we continuing to buy voice phones? Like, are they breaking every year or a large amount of money for voice phones and services?
Well, they are expensive. They're a hundred dollars apiece, and we are reaching end of life. So some of them, we know we will need to replace. So I believe our methodology this year was to budget for a quarter at every building and start a cycle process of replacing them.
I saw you had a network engineer in there. Can we just hire an IT director who has networking experience?
I don't have a network engineer. Would you do?
Uh, I think I thought $10,000 for a network engineer.
That's probably to facilitate some of the upgrades that we're going to do this spring, but that's not a person, that's support. Yes, we have.
Right, support, okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But this person we hired has the experience of that, so I was just clarifying.
Yeah, and unfortunately, like most people know, we have a lot of improvements to do this summer. Uh, he's got a tall task management, and I certainly authorized him to get the third-party vending to help him where he needs to, whether it's active directory, whether it's working, uh, cabling, maybe he can cable to, but I wouldn't ask him to climb up in the ceilings and cable his time, it's valuable, so I authorize certainly support where he needs it.
I noticed year after year, the finance software is around $35,000. This is software in repair. Is there a specific repair issue with finance or, it's like, $35,000 is a lot of money? Just for the software?
Yeah, I'd ask Jamie about that software.
I think Jamie's here. Administration. Is this administration?
That's the title of the information, Jamie?
Is the state name for that kind of software, where it means that it's off to have our finance software filed posted with our annual licensing fees to operate it? And that's here?
Yes, it is. It's a lot. I have noticed that you had said IT had $88,000 from undesigned, we have a substantial amount of work to do. Is that being funded through other revenues? Is that why you're clarifying just $88,000?
No, it's, so it's not a, like, I, I designated it's funding IT, that's not how it works. The revenue just balances the budget. What I'm doing is I'm highlighting one-time costs that I think we will not need to get next year.
I noticed the bus cell phones were $6,000 a year, which was a huge jump. Why aren't we just paying like a stipend for people to use their personal call versus having all of these extra contracts? How do you deal with that? Handphones and?
Each bus has a, has a specific cellphone number, so it doesn't matter which driver's driving it, but it has a specific cellphone. So rather than having to know who's the bus driver, what is cell phone, the bus has a cellphone.
It's much safer to have a consistent phone that you know is going to be on, it's going to go to that bus regardless of the driver, the driver forgot their phone, driver hates their minutes, whatever it might be.
Okay.
So, and so it really is a.
So that's fair, except when I read the warrants and I see they're roughly around $300 a month and just, it's minor, I understand, I just, those are the things will be overbudgeted all over the place, it adds up eventually. So about $3,600 to saying it's over $6,000. It's everywhere.
I, I don't have many questions, but I'm ready to make some comments if you did break.
Yeah, go ahead.
So first off, we've been at this for months now. So, you know, December 14th was the first official meeting.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear? December 14th was the first official meeting regarding budgets, but we've been talking about budgets for, since October. And the idea of a $400,000 going towards projects was an outcome of a budget meeting we had with unassigned fund balance from months ago. So to say there's a lack of transparency and that people don't know what's going on with the budgets, it's, it's a false narrative. You've gone to the meetings and you've had the budget sheets that you can take and you can read, and you had the budget last meeting in which you could look and you could go through these things. And the same information I've got was presented and forwarded to anybody else to get, if it was a, I don't know how it's.
Please allow, Brian.
You've been to all of the meetings. So many of the questions that are being asked tonight are also questions that were asked or discussed at those meetings. So the narrative of the information has not gone out and it has not been afforded to you is just not true. And then in regards to, you didn't get the information until Friday, true? The final budget didn't come out till Friday. And I've been working very closely with the school department as part of the finance committee, and I actually wrote over four pages of questions to Mr. Grant and to Ms. Youngblood over the updated budget. And in response, I received over four pages of responses, so.
That doesn't mean it's true for everybody. I've asked questions to Mr. Menzinger, how can you say that?
The information is there if you wanted it, Haley, there is telling.
That is not true.
It is true.
No, it isn't. I've asked questions, and I've been, you don't know. You'll still know, but you don't know.
Not for the public.
That's right. Or.
So to go back.
Okay, please allow Brian.
To go back on some questions, reference, reference actuals to the group. I did do a survey or a audit of the 23 actuals along with other members of the finance committee. We did recognize and identify the differences in spending versus budgeted, and we did make a conscious effort to adjust the budget so that it would be called a recalibration so that we would find those items that were underspent in 23 and are trending to be underspent in 24 and apply that to the 25 budget. And throughout my research on it, I found that the overwhelming majority of items that, that were identified from the 23 budget had been addressed in the 25 budget by staying either static or being fixed. The difference in the increase is people. So the, the cost centers that we've gone through exhaustively have been looked at and addressed in an appropriate way. And I think it's fair that this won't be the one-time fix, because you can't accept all the risk in one year to make dramatic changes. But I think the finance committee and the administration made honest attempts and a complete effort to, to refocus the budget, to adjust cost centers so that it best reflects what is needed for the school and that it's best for the community. The guidance or the discussion points that you have been in all of the finance committee meetings to hear that was communicated to the administration was, I personally wanted to see the budget adjusted without any cuts to the current programs. And I think the administration has done a very good job at, at adjusting their, their finances so that programs are not cut, but reasonable adjustments have been made to recalibrate the budget, and I think that has been accomplished. So the 23 actuals were looked at, Mr. Ford, and a great deal of efforts put into it. Student outcomes were addressed, especially when we talked about making sure that we had an increase to teachers, we made sure that we retained a nurse. We used actual numbers of students rather than outdated projections, because we had the administration actually go through and find out how many students we had in seats today compared to what we will have next year. So the numbers being used at the 1375 is actually a really, really good working number. Better, I think it's better than the projected that had been done in past administrations, which are almost two years old now. We had worked through leftovers in the budget, and there is a correct comment of there was bad budget planning. I believe there's bad budget planning. Two years ago, I stood at the podium over there and I, I criticized the school on their budget, much like some of you have done tonight. And I, I think we have made significant improvements over the last nine months, and it is seen through a, a very good budget. It isn't perfect. You will be able to come to this meeting next year and go, ha, this was wrong. Yep, that's budgeting. But we did put out goals as a school committee that were to reduce the unassigned fund balance by 2025, and with this budget does that. To have a zero increase to the local share, this budget does that. And then where we did fall short is less than $700,000 in the carryforward from the unassigned fund balance. When you discount the one-time projects, that's in about the $900,000, which I consider to be a reasonable, a reasonable give to try and put together a new budget. So the honest effort and the work has gone into this, and I support the budget. And I think it's best for our community.
To that, nowhere have I ever talked about cutting a program.
Didn't say you did.
So I want to be very clear, I support teachers as well, and I haven't heard anything about how this helps teachers in the classroom, how this helps them have more hands in the classroom, how this helps them feel safe and secure, supported at work. I haven't heard how this is going to reach learning objectives. You might have that information, I haven't heard it.
You were in all of the, the finance meetings where we discussed that. If you would like to go into the budget, there are line items by teacher's name of what they would like for supplies. And it's a by name within the, within the budget, which you had last month.
See, we don't have access to the teachers. We, we, I want it, I was cut off last time, I want feedback from them. What more do they need? What did they get cut that they wanted?
They don't go to you for those, they go to the building principals, and then they come to me.
Right, correct.
And then I present the budget. I didn't touch their supply lines, I didn't touch instructional supplies. The third grade teachers got what they requested, the second grade teachers got what they requested, and every student K four, K eight, excuse me, grade A are getting supplies per one of the school committee objectives. I, I think it is, it is very unfair to say that you don't see where teachers are supported in this budget.
I see that there's, that those supplies, and what I asked for, what I was trying to ask for last time was that we would, as a committee, get feedback from the teachers. If there's something more they needed or wanted that we could help achieve through the budget, I didn't get to have that opportunity.
But that's not your job, that's my job.
It just answered you on that, that none of the teachers' supplies got cut. They got all of their. Can I finish, please? All of their requests got put through. In the past, I've been part of years where they have gotten instructional material cut. Mr. Grant just said all of the requests that the teachers put in to the administration got approved. Perfect, so I won't hear one teacher say that they wanted something they didn't receive that will help them learn at the end of the year, help the students learn.
If it was put in their budget, they'd move forward with it. I mean, there's a certain, if it wasn't put in the budget and the principals didn't get to see it, then you don't.
Again, it's, it's not.
I don't know how to answer that.
It's about the process. The process is the principals to make, teachers' principals may bend to the school committee. It is not teachers to school committee, that's not how this works, it's not a handed toward that.
I agree, actually.
No, you don't understand. You're saying that you want to hear from the teachers.
Actually, if you read the main statute, it says very clearly that the school, the school board members are supposed to have communication, as does their contract, that we're supposed to be communicating and hearing from them, so that's not true. What other questions do you have about?
Regarding the budget and supplies, it says that, the budget and supplies, there's.
Not supplies, talking about communication. To give the, to give.
What questions do you have specific about this budget? That's what we're discussing right now.
Also, there are people at this who have very close relationships with teachers at this table, so to give this impression that teachers aren't allowed to communicate with school board members is false.
What questions do you have specific to this budget? Because at that point, this is where we are at. I guess that's all my questions, okay? I made a motion to, oh, Chris, do you have more? Because I was going to.
Each of you.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the second reading of the FY 25 budget.
The second?
Any further discussion?
Haley, last time you voted no. What in this budget is a, you've talked a lot of procedural. We're at a dollar value in a budget.
Exactly.
What money value and thing not included or is included is causing the fall? What is, is there something that should be included in this budget that you have, that you kind of got?
First, you're asking why I don't know, which is not supposed to happen, but I'll leave you some questions because I'm a very transparent person.
What would, what would I, what would this budget have to have for you to be pleased with? I'm not talking process, I'm talking, there is thousands of line of budget here. I'm not talking process, I'm talking, there is thousands of line of budget here. What part of this budget would make you happy with it?
It's hard to say, because the process was so broken. I know you want to say besides process, besides the one fundamental thing that outlines the team effort and the thing we are elected to do, which is just one of the number one things. We as a team are supposed to sit together at a table and have these discussions as workshops, not as final readings. Final readings are, yep, we all pretty much agree, this is what it's going to look like.
At the last school committee meeting, we gave the public two opportunities to speak about the budget. There's been six sub.
I'm thinking, yep, yep.
Yeah, six subcommittee finance meetings. And last time, there was, there was opportunity for the committee to ask questions when the budget was over, I mean, I could be wrong, over twenty million dollars. So we are not surprised by a nineteen million dollar budget. In fact, I'm appreciative of all the hard work that the administration, finance committee, town council members have done. Some of the public has emailed us questions, of which we've responded to. Committee members have the ability to email questions as well, such as what Brian mentioned. So I'm appreciative of all the work and that it's a reduced budget and that there's zero impact to them.
If I could just make one more comment. Just trying to put apples to apples. I can only find on DOE the FY twenty-one state per pupil cost, but I think it's very key for us to know this. The average state per pupil cost in FY twenty-one was fifteen thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars. The per pupil cost at thirteen seventy-five students for Herman in FY twenty-five, according to my public school math, comes out to fourteen million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. So here we are, two years later, and we're still under, two, one, two, two, three, four, actually, three years later, and we're actually under the state average for per pupil cost. So apples to apples, I think we're, we're in the ballpark, and we're doing the right thing.
We haven't had budget meetings, they were listed as finance, you were correct, that's a correct statement. They haven't been workshops, they haven't been, are you agreeing or?
No, I'm ready to vote.
I don't know why you guys laugh, that is. I'm saying you're not following the proper process, and to say, give this impression that we had a group effort, we haven't, and questions I have sent have not been answered, that's inaccurate. In fact, you basically said, I'm not one we're allowed to email and ask questions, and that will be addressed soon. Why? Because it's over budgeted, the process wasn't followed, and it's been over budgeted. When you look at what gets reported to the state, it's millions more than what actually, the actual cost that gets reported to DOE. I have yet to have someone explain to me why it looks like we're spending, say, we have seventeen million budgeted, and we're telling DOE we're spending fifty last year, I don't even have the numbers, I'm going to dare to say.
What are you asking to be changed with this budget?
I asked, beginning of the year, just as I did the year prior, to be part of the process.
What are you asking to be changed for this budget with the numbers?
Would it matter today? Would it matter if I said, cut this, this, or this?
This is your opportunity to speak, that's what I, that's what I'm asking, and the other, like, last month, we had an opportunity, like I said, with twenty million dollars.
We didn't have an opportunity every time. Ms. Euler, we did it.
Every time you interrupt, finish.
Because you listed it as a presentation, I had no idea we were going to vote, we should not have voted on that, that was an illegal vote to begin with, you made a motion for something that was not on the agenda?
What questions do you have specific to this budget?
There is nothing I can say that would change things today, you know it.
You know what? I'm asking you for your opinion, so you have nothing? Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries? Move to adjourn the meeting at, oh, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven forty-three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Right.